Okay, we're good.
All right. So. All right. Good evening, everybody. Tonight it is January nineteenth, twenty twenty-two. My name is Rob Cagnetta, and this is a meeting of the South Kingston Zoning Board of Review. Members present tonight are Thomas Daniels, our Vice Chairman, Bill Rosen, Casey Charkwick, Susan Walsh, and Russell Beau Brown, who's our alternate. Also present is Jamie Gorman, the South Kingston Building Zoning Building Official, Amy Goins, South Kingston Special Legal Counsel, and Jessica Spence, the Administrative Support Associate. The board is made up of seven people, where five of us are regular voting members. Five members are required to be present to vote. In the event that one of the five regular members is not present, an alternate will step in and vote. And we can use another member. So tonight, the voting members will be myself, Mr. Daniels, Mr. Rosen, Mr. Charkwick, and Ms. Walsh. The applicants are here for either a variance dimensional or use, or to seek a special use permit. This board is a quasi judicial body created by the South Kingston Zoning Ordinance pursuant to the state statute. We don't follow strict rules of evidence, and we operate in what we believe is to be a fair and equitable manner. We try to let everyone speak unless they get a little carried away, or it's determined not to be relevant. So in the interest of time, I try to be brief and on point. The meetings take a little bit longer in Zoom. So so just kind of try to be ready when it's your turn to speak, so we can kind of hopefully get through the meeting as efficiently as we can. We do our best not to argue, and we keep things civil, and we're trying to have the last petition heard by ten o'clock. When your petition is called, please come. Jessica will will have you come forward and then state your name and spell it for the record. Please speak clearly so we can all hear you. You will then be asked to take an oath to tell the truth, and then you can present your petition along with any other witnesses that will testify in your support. The board will then ask your you or your witnesses questions, and after the petitioner has presented their testimony, anyone else with questions about the application wanting to support or oppose the petition will be asked to make themselves known, and we'll let you know how to do that afterwards. Then you will identify yourself, be sworn in, and present your testimony, which can be followed up by questions from the board. Please direct any questions. I guess it's easy on Zoom, but the direct your questions will be directed to the board, and then the board will then ask questions of the applicant or any of the witnesses. So after all the testimony and before the vote is taken, board members will be asked to discuss the evidence presented. Variances and special use permits require four or five voting members to vote in favor in order for the granting the requested relief. The board members will ask a lot of questions, and there's a good reason. We cannot just grant anything we choose. There are rules to follow per the South Kingston per the South Kingston Ordinance. So you must give testimony that supports certain facts to allow your request to be approved. Tonight, we have dimensional variances and special use permits on the agenda. For variances, you must offer the evidence to the board that sets forth the following: that your hardship is due to the unique characteristics of the subject land or the structure, and is not due to the general characteristics of the surrounding area. Your hardship is not the result of any prior action on your part, that the granting of this variance will not alter the general character of the surrounding area. The relief requested is the least relief necessary, and you must demonstrate that your hardship to be suffered, if it is not granted, the variance is not granted, will amount to more than a mere inconvenience. For a special use permit, you have to present the following: that the requested special use is specifically authorized by the ordinance. Somewhere in the zoning ordinance, this has to be authorized, or we don't have the power to grant it. The requested special use meets all the criteria set forth in the zoning, authorizing such special use. And that granting the special use permit will not alter the general characteristic of the surrounding area or impair the purpose or intent of the zoning ordinance. So that's that's how we function. Tonight, we have six items on the agenda. There was a request. I know that everyone was delayed. These these continuations that we have, the first five were from last month, and I have to apologize, but there's something from the town that has kind of come in front of us that is they've requested to go first, and it's something that that has safety implications in in terms of public safety to get sort of the to get this passed or not. So this is pretty critical that we get through this tonight. So I have to apologize to everybody else that was expecting to go first. This one, I'm not sure how long it's going to take. There are some folks that talk, you know, there's a lot of to be presented in terms of evidence, so it might take about an hour or so. So or more. So for those that that are first, one through five, please, I apologize, but be patient, and we'll we'll try to make sure that that we can make everyone aware as to how much time we think we have left, and, you know, just go about your night and try not to drink too much wine before you come forward. So so we're gonna and there's nothing else that we need to get to first, Jessica.
Did you want me just to review kind of the Zoom stuff, just because it's been a while?
Yes, please.
Sure. So the chairman highlighted some of these points. All applicants, they're going to remain muted, and their videos are going to remain off until your petition is called. At that time, I will ask you all to unmute and turn on your video. How it's going to work if you are an attendee. Once the applicant has given all of their testimony, the chairman will ask if there's anyone in the audience who wishes to speak. At that point, if you're an attendee, you should raise your hand, and you will be called upon the order of which you raise your hand. We will allow you to talk at that point, and then when you're done speaking, you'll be put back on mute. So if you have another question, you're going to need to raise your hand again. Then, once the applicant has presented all of their testimony, they will be moved to an attendee status. Couple of things to keep in mind. All of the documents are available to view online at southkingstownri.com, and if you search current zoning applications, you'll be able to bring up everything that has been submitted for each application. The question and answer function that many of you see on the bottom of your computer, that is only to be used if you're having a technical Zoom issue. That form will not be used for any questions pertaining to anything on the agenda. So if you need a question, if you have a question and you need to speak to someone, or, you know, you want it addressed, you need to raise your hand. If you were calling by phone, you need to do star nine, that function will raise your hand, and then star six will mute and unmute you. So those are kind of just the basic Zoom highlights.
Excellent. Thank you, Jessica. Amy, was there anything you wanted to add to my opening, or are we?
This is Amy Goins, Special Legal Counsel for the zoning board. No, Rob, you've covered it. Thanks.
Okay, so we're reading the first petition of a petition of the Union Fire District of South Kingston, P.O. Box three two seven Wakefield, Rhode Island, zero two eight eight zero, for a dimensional variance under the zoning ordinance as follows. The applicant is seeking to replace the existing fire station with a five thousand seventy-five square foot fire station to construct an eighteen hundred ninety square foot auxiliary building for emergency medical services. The proposed access driveway will be eighteen feet wide. The required width for two-way traffic is twenty-four feet. Relief of six feet is requested. Proposed parking on the premises will consist of ten spaces. Sixteen spaces are required. Relief of six spaces is requested. The planning board granted advisory development plan review approval on November twenty-third, twenty twenty-one. Lot size is point seven three acres. The dimensional variance is required per zoning ordinance section seven zero eight, width of access driveways, section seven one one, minimum off-street parking requirements, and section nine zero seven, standards of relief. Owner of the property is a Union Fire District for the premises located at forty-nine Mattoonik Schoolhouse Road, South Kingston, Assessors Map eighty-six dash two, Lot thirty-two, and is zoned GI government and institutional. Just just oh, you still there? Oh, you moved. Can you read the list for me of the documents, please?
Sure. So the documents that were submitted. We have an application with cover letter and attachment signed and dated November thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. We have the owner authorization signed and notarized September eighth, twenty twenty-one. We have a permit submission plan set, which is nine pages, dated July thirtieth, twenty twenty-one, with revisions on September tenth, twenty twenty-one, and November eighteenth, twenty twenty-one, which was prepared by Joe Casali Engineering Incorporated and stamped by Joe Casali P.E. There is exterior elevations existing in proposed two pages, prepared by Ahorian and Associates, Inc. There is the proposed plan, one page, also prepared by Ahorian and Associates, Inc. There's the lighting schedule, which is one page, prepared by Robert Lindstrom, and dated August sixth, twenty twenty-one. There's the location plan, one page, prepared by Stephen Pinch, PLS, and dated November twenty-ten. There's the project narrative and stormwater management report, one hundred and ninety-six pages, dated July twenty twenty-one, with revisions on September twenty twenty-one and November twenty-one, twenty twenty-one, prepared by Joe Casali Engineering, Inc. It was also stamped by Joe Casali P.E. There's a development plan review decision, which was two pages. It was granted on November twenty-third, twenty twenty-one, and recorded on December third, twenty twenty-one. Land Evidence Book eighteen fourteen, pages five forty-seven and five forty-eight. There's also a two-hundred-foot radius map in a butters list. There's the legal notice. There's the proof of certified mailing and notarized affidavit of mailing, and there's the revised legal notice with Zoom instructions. And we received one correspondence in regards to this. It's from a Kristen and Richard Schwab, sixty-one Mattoonik Schoolhouse Road. That's it.
Thank you, Jessica. I made you read the longest one. So should I start by reading in the letter? Or Ms. Hogan, do you want to get started first, and then we can read this later in the letter and later?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Whatever the board's pleasure is, is regards to the abutting property owner. We're happy to have you read it now or after?
While I read it now, because I want to also make sure, and I might check with Amy, is going to about just making sure we can stay focused on what we're here for. Right? There's no other design aspects or but this is mainly for the spaces and the relief for access.
That's correct.
For the road in. So not for the buildings, not for their size, not for their location, nothing like that.
All that has been resolved at the the planning board level.
Okay. So I'll read this in. This is January eighteenth, twenty twenty-two. To this town of South Kingston Zoning Board, my husband and I have lived at sixty-one Mattoonik House Road, the historic Mattoonik Schoolhouse, abutting the Mattoonik Firehouse for the past twelve years. Understand that the zoning board is considering the request for a variance of waivers needed to construct a new town EMS facility and a rebuilt and expanded Mattoonik Firehouse according to a plan referred to by the planning board. As a registered landscape architect with over thirty-five years of community planning, sustainable design, and project construction experience, I understand the need for a reasonable waivers and variances, but those being requested here are beyond the realm of reason or fairness to the surrounding neighborhood and represent an attempt to shoehorn in a land use on a site that is simply too small and constrained. As you consider the matter, we would like to vehemently restate some of the objections to the proposed plan that we have made to both the town council and the planning board of the past months, which resulted in a town seeking and identifying a potential alternative site for the EMS station. This three-quarter acre rural site is not an appropriate location for a high-density, high-intensity emergency service complex, much less a doubling of the density already present at the volunteer firehouse site, enabled only through a non-conforming pre-existing conditions provision made over forty years ago. The applicant cannot even manage to accommodate the buyer-bones requirements of its GI zone without resorting to close close to zero lots line setbacks and unlimited lot coverage, and the need for significant waivers of basic parking driveway width and landscape buffer requirements. EMF Chief Stanley himself said repeatedly that the site is not ideal and is tight, and also we will soon need multiple vehicles in the south side of town area. Granting these requested variances and waivers to build this site to the tune of a million dollars on a bad light lot in a bad location with no chance of being expanded in the future does not make long-term sense. To be clear, we are a hundred percent behind the firehouse getting redone in approximate in the approximate existing footprint. We also support the expansion of the EMT service to our computer community. We purchased our property knowing full well that it had a volunteer firehouse next door with its associated zoning of government institutional land use. It could not be expected to have known or imagined that the town would use this isolated constricted site to build a municipal facility. This is not just a NIMBY situation. This should not be viewed as a decision about life versus backup feebers. The recent identification of a site on Post Road for EMS station shows that there is much better site alternatives for the needed EMS use, but the plan you are considering asks us to simply trust that this is the necessary exploitation of this site. In fact, one of the supporters of the project who spoke at the planning board last fall stated that we should exploit every inch of this and any property we have in town, regardless of context. The planning and zoning boards granting approvals of significant waivers, variances that they would never grant to private citizens would be evidence of such unchecked exploitation. If exploitation is driving planning and zoning decisions for the town's own facilities, it's a sad day for our town. Now that a more suitable alternative site has been identified, we ask you to table this proposal to await the process being undertaken to confirm its viability. Thank you for your consideration, Kristen and Richard Schwab. Okay. Ms. Hogan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, members of the board, this is Margaret Hogan. I serve as the district solicitor for the Union Fire District, and I have been in that position since nineteen ninety-four. As such, I am well acquainted with the needs of the Union Fire District as the town of South Kingston has expanded its growth over the last close to thirty years that I've been involved. Excuse me. As the chair briefly mentioned at the commencement of the meeting, the focus of the application here before you this evening has virtually nothing to do with the letter that has just been read into the record. The issues of the location, the setbacks, the landscaping, lot coverage, what have you, have it all been determined at the site plan review level after a period of approximately six months of review? We are before this honorable body solely for two-dimensional variances, both of which are related to the conditions of the lot themselves itself, and I have a team of experts here to review any questions that you may have. We have, in fact, filed for the record primarily and only the full application that has been heard before the planning board, and consists of two hundred and twenty-two pages of documents as identified by Ms. Spence at the commencement of the meeting. And we are focused primarily on page twelve of that application, which is the proposed site conditions for the application. What I don't know and not sure of is whether or not you can bring that up on the screen or whether you need us to do that or.
Whichever you would prefer, your engineers can have permission to share, or I can bring it up, whichever they'd prefer.
If it's right there in front of you, Ms. Spence, it would be helpful, probably, if you could just bring it up.
Sure, and you said page twelve?
Yes, please.
Give me one moment.
At least that's how it reads on my screen when I pull it up, so. And as we're waiting for that, I just want to indicate that this evening, the team is here, Joe Casali from Casali Engineers, David Horton, Dan DeCesaro. We also have Chief Stanley from your EMS department in the town of South Kingston, and we have Steve Pinch, the chief of the Union Fire District of South Kingston. In addition, in the audience, as viewers, attendees, is the Union Fire District Board of Wardens, just so that everybody's aware who's here.
I'm just about there. Sorry, it took a minute to download.
Okay.
No worries. So as we're waiting for that to load, I'm going to give you just again a brief preview of what we're up to here. So as was mentioned in the letter read by Ms. Spence, the town of South Kingston since the approval of the, is there some background noise?
So as was mentioned in the letter read by Ms. Spence, the town of South Kingston.
Can you guys hear that echo?
Yeah.
Yeah, Jess, Jess, do you have the ability to?
Can everybody else turn off there?
Yeah.
Turn off their microphones?
Yeah. Sorry, it just threw me off.
Can you guys hear that echo?
Okay. Wow. I I just muted. I think we should be all set now.
Wow, this is really strange.
It might be you, Jess, you might have to mute.
Yeah, she was getting the feedback. Yep, thank you. Okay, so as I as I referenced earlier, the project has been through six months of review at the town level. Prior to that, there were a number of modifications to the plans as the town had come forward and requested that we include them in this in this application process for the new EMS building. As has been identified recently in the newspaper, many of you have probably read it. The town of South Kingston has, since we've received our development plan review, been approached, I believe, by the South Kingston Land Trust on an alternative site. We do not dispute that that alternative site, should the town select to go with it, would be a preferable site for the town. Nevertheless, we have committed to the town to complete the process of seeking the relief that we need as a fallback plan for the town's EMS building. To that end, on the site plan itself, on page twelve, and hopefully maybe you folks all have a copy of it at home as well, since having trouble getting it up on the screen. You will see the proposed location of both the rebuilt fire station as well as the new proposed building to the rear of the property. I'll call your attention, if I could, to the the front of the plan. Yes, thank you. Closest to the street side, you'll notice that the driveway is proposed to be eighteen feet in width, and immediately adjacent to that, and in between the eighteen-foot driveway and the Schwab's property next door is a four and a half, four point six, I believe, strip of landscape materials that are to remain as a buffer for the abutting property owner. Then to the rear of the property, well, right in the front of the property, pardon me, you'll see one handicap spot, and then to the rear of the property on the right-hand side, as you look at the site plan on the screen, you'll see several parking spaces along the right side of the property, and then, once the plan drops down, you can see along the backside of the lot the the additional parking spaces. We have identified in the application the 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 count that is required under the zoning ordinance, which was sixteen, and that we are seeking dimensional relief for the remaining spots, primarily because they're not necessary for the use of the the site. The zoning ordinance calculates parking by square footage and not by use, and so it overcalculates, if you will, for many uses, including this one. Physically, could we add additional parking spaces to this site, possibly? But it would require additional impervious surface, and we have ruled that out for those reasons. At this point, I'd like to bring up Mr. Casali, and and I assume you swear him in. Who swears him in?
I'm beating.
Okay, great, thanks. Mr. Can you see him?
Yes. Right hand. Do you swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state your name.
For the record, my name's Joe Casali. I'm a registered professional engineer. Offices at three hundred Post Road in Warwick.
Could you spell it for us, too?
A C A S L I.
Not the whole sentence. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Cagnetta. Mr. Casali, good evening. For how long have you been a registered professional engineer in the state of Rhode Island?
About twenty twenty-six years.
Okay, and the primary focus of your practice is what?
We're civil site geotechnical engineers.
Okay, and you are qualified to prepare and submit the application and the site plans that you have, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, Mr. Casali, you are personally familiar with this particular site, are you not?
I am.
Okay, and you have visited the site on more many times, probably more than one occasion, yes?
Yes, I have.
Okay, I'm going to have you describe to the board first the driveway width and how you came to the determination of the proposed width and what alternatives you did suggest in that process, if you would go ahead.
Sure, Mr. Chairman, so the basis of the design of the eighteen feet was we try to maintain at least the edge of the existing bushes on the westernmost side of the butters, the Schwabs, the letter that just came in. I think that's approximately four point six four feet. We also have four feet on the easternmost side of the land trust. We made numerous revisions, and the architect is is here if you want to discuss in detail, but in essence, that building cannot be any thinner than is already shown and be able to house the apparatus that you see before you. Once we were able to put the ADA parking space in to comport with the federal regulations, what was left was eighteen feet in width being the authority having jurisdiction, both Union Fire and the and the town have agreed that eighteen feet eighteen feet would be enough operationally for for them to do what needs to be done.
Mr. Casali, did the was the building located in other places at any particular point in time, or?
Yeah, in terms of relativity to the eighteen feet, no, not much bearing, but yes, we have moved that building back. You'll see that it is parallel with the existing garage. We have done that at the request of the butters. As the board may know, you know, we've made many both site and architectural and operational considerations and concessions to try to, you know, as best we could on a tough site, make the land trust happy on one side, that we were not going to need any temporary or permanent easements to work there, and try to comply as best we could on the westernmost neighbor, realizing an existing station exists there today. It is much more forward than what you see on the proposed plan, and it's also in a more westerly direction than what you see in existing conditions.
All right, thank you. Now, in regards to the parking areas, would you identify for the board, first of all, where they are located and why they're located where they are?
Yeah, so, you know, per code, as you had stated, Attorney Hogan, that it's a function of square footage. The math will tell us that sixteen spaces are required. We originally proposed twelve through the process with the town in the realization of how important it was to reduce impervious areas, but still maintain the Union Fires program. We were able to reduce to ten. we were able to reduce to ten spaces. The basis of that design, Mr. Chairman, is we expect upwards of two personnel in the EMS building, six personnel in the fire station. One of the spaces is ADA. It really only leaves one additional space for future, you know, future growth or consideration. We could have scribed in all sixteen spaces. We don't need them operationally. The community didn't want them environmentally. It was a concession that we made. I hope you realize that both of these dimensional variances were brought upon by the ramifications of us, you know, going back and forth with different iterations to try to, you know, really balance a tough, tough site.
Thank you. Mr. Casali, the question is, assuming for the moment, assuming for the moment, that the EMS building were not located on the property, isn't it a fact that the driveway width would still need to be eighteen feet?
Yes, yes, that, that's a direct correlation of the firehouse, not the EMS building.
Okay, and the same holds true for the location of the, of the parking spaces, does it not? They would still continue to need to be located in the rear of the property, correct?
They would. We could possibly reduce a couple of spaces for those two personnel, but really not much more.
So you would be seeking to, in a, in an increased variance from the number?
Yeah.
If we reduce, okay. I, I don't think I have any additional questions for this witness. Of course, if the board has questions, we, I'm not intending to present testimony on the need for the EMS or the architecture of the building unless the board has questions of those witnesses or of Mr. Stanley. Again, that goes to the town's needs, which have already been adjudicated at the planning board level. And then I would like the opportunity at the conclusion to sum up why we believe that the two dimensional variances should be granted by this board. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hogan. Mr. Casali, what, what requires it to be a full width, twenty-four foot width?
Um, I'm, I don't, I don't know, Mr. Chairman, it's, it's odd that it is in your zoning ordinance that even private driveways are regulated by the zoning board. And the width of a, of a driveway aisle dimensionally in, in your code is twenty-four feet. That's common, that's, that's normal width of, of in between a conventional parking field. You know, you would have a sixty-foot wide field, eighteen-foot spaces on either side, and then a twenty-four-foot lane in the middle. I would assume that basis came from, from that dimension.
So I guess the, the concern would be then that, oh, what's the width of a single lane typically?
You know, typically a single lane is anywhere from twelve feet. You may see them as large as thirteen, or really as small as, as ten or eleven on older, on older roadways.
So essentially, we're making a little bit wider of a one-way.
Yeah, instead of having two twelve-foot lanes, you would have two nine-foot lanes, and nine feet is the width of a parking space.
Interesting, okay, so cars are, excuse me, cars are typically skinnier than that?
They, they are, but in this case, whenever we would reduce a driveway width, the most important factor to, to me or to us as civil engineers would be public safety. Could, if the chief or his designees needed to run multiple either ambulances or multiple trucks, would eighteen feet be enough? In this case, because it's just a private driveway, you know, we have the AHJ right, right here with us on the board. They've deemed that it would be enough for, for them to do operationally what they need to do.
Mr. Casali, I'm sorry, Mr. Kegneta, I just wanted him, very briefly, the AHJ for the board, explain what that is, please, and why that's relevant.
So the authority having jurisdiction, anytime you look to something that may affect health, safety, and welfare, you'd want to go to, the, the fire code always speaks to the authority having jurisdiction. In this case, it, it would fall under Chief Pinch and, and Chief Stanley being the town and the, and the fire department.
Thank you.
So, so it would have cleared their, they, they would be assured that they can manage the egress for emergency situations. Meaning that, that they can wait the time, if need be, to let one vehicle leave, and then another vehicle enter. And they don't feel that that's going to be an infringement on their safety or quote-unquote the public, even though the public isn't necessarily using that driveway.
That's right, yes.
For purposes of clarification, the, the fire trucks, Mr. Casali, are located solely in the front, is that correct?
They are, so in this case, the only emergency vehicle that would be leaving would be ultimately the ambulance. The way the layout is stated, is, is done, you've referenced Attorney Hogan, that the, the two fire apparatuses are up front. That's why it makes this palatable. At no time would you, you know, run fire trucks to and from the back of the building. That will only be for the access of those nine spaces, and those presumably are all staff and trained fire personnel.
And Mr. Casali, like, i- is there, is there a situation where in a, if, if this were another petition of, 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 of just anyone saying that they wanted to have egress to and from their property to be restricted to eighteen feet, would, do you see that there would be, not an objection, but there would be any concern about, about any emergency vehicles accessing or, or managing the site?
Yeah, it, it, I would say that it's always on a case-by-case basis, and that's why the AHJ reviews it. They know how they would fight a fire, or how they would set up on every site in town with emergency, and I think they take that into consideration. I have seen fire lanes reduced as low as sixteen feet. You know, and normally they are at a, at twenty feet. Why the code restricts the width of a driveway on, on a private site, I'm not sure. But a typical driveway of fire lane width is, is twenty feet.
So, so basically, when they look at this site plan, they're going to say that we can have apparatus, apparatus at these locations to fight any emergency situation, and there's still going to be egress from the site, is what they kind of look like, look at.
Correct, correct. If, if this was a different type of use, and let's say you had a, and a fire department connection in the back of that building, maybe you wouldn't want an ambulance going one way while the tanker truck is going the other way to, to pressurize that sprinkler system. But in this case, really, you only have the ambulance coming up and the nine service vehicles, the nine, you know, personal vehicles coming down. It, it's, it's not intended for either for public use either. That's what the ADA spaces is, is for.
Other board members, other questions?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Good, Mr. Daniels.
Tom Daniels. Mr. Casali, I, I couldn't quite determine on the site plan, the existing building, the width, the east to west width. It looks to me, and, and maybe you can confirm, that the new building is somewhat less dimension east to west. Is that, is that a fair statement?
Yes, the, the existing building is, you know, it's further south on the site or more towards Matunik Schoolhouse Road. At the request of the abutters, we have, you know, strategically placed that building as far back as we could and not compromise our ability to get ADA parking and also public safety, you know, we, we need to have some visibility with the use of this building. And yes, Mr. Daniels, we've also pushed that building as far east as we could without infringing on the land trust property during construction. The four feet was instrumental because we have to dig and pour that foundation along that eastern property.
Well, the reason I, I ask that is, it appears, just from a personal observation of the site, that the current drive is fifteen feet wide.
Correct.
That makes sense?
It is. The current drive, driveway is existing legal, non-conforming, corrected. It's, it's not the required twenty-four feet. In, in essence, it's even thinner than the proposed eighteen at, at fifteen.
So you're effectively increasing the, the width of what exists there presently?
We are.
Okay. The other question I have, just, just for clarification, the EM, proposed EMS building, that is going to go beyond what is currently paved into the grass area, is that correct?
That is.
Into the grass area?
Yes, that will be in order, that, that is correct. That'll be further to the, to the rear of the site or the north of the site. A couple of the elements that we have, have done to reduce the amount of impervious area is not only reduce the amount of parking, but you'll see we have a specialized septic system that I'm allowed to put the infiltrating components of it under impervious areas. And so we were able to save as much as we could on that northern site, so as not to have this lot entirely impervious.
Well, it seems to be a significant change in elevation between what exists and the, the currently paved area and the grassed area. So is that going to be filled? Is that the plan?
Yeah, the architect has, has designed the building so that it's going to step, this foundation is going to step through the change of grade. The existing grade now, it needs to be flattened because of, we think of it in the worst inclement conditions, that ambulance needs to get up that slope. We felt that eight percent, which is the maximum in your planning code in normal, almost every community, thirty-eight of the thirty-nine communities, eight percent maximum slope. That's why we made that access road, that driveway at eight percent. But that is going to require us to fill towards the, the rear of the site.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Daniels. Any other board members' questions?
I, I just have one question. Could you just repeat how many, how many personnel will be on the facility? Your connection disrupted there when you mentioned that piece.
Yes, of course. So the basis for the ten spaces are, we expect two personnel in the EMS building, six in the firehouse, which is eight spaces. One is ADA, not that it's, it's not a space, but, you know, it's designated, as we all know. And so in, in essence, it only leaves that one additional space, which is why we're proposing ten. Again, initially, we were upwards of twelve code one sixteen, we're respectfully asking for relief for six of those spaces.
Okay, and is there much anticipated use for the extra spaces?
That one additional space, no. If we're at, if personnel is there for full capacity, you would have eight of those ten spaces taken up. One, if there is need for ADA, and then that would leave one extra space. You know, should it be needed for either operationally or for a visitor of some type.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Walsh?
I think Mr. Charnawick asked something that I was going to ask also, but I'm going to take it a little bit further and ask, what happens if you do have like a meeting or something and have more than eight personnel out there? Where's, is, what are the plans for an overflow parking if necessary?
Chief, come in on this. Go ahead, in, in terms of what we do in, in meetings, I know we have multiple properties within the community.
Mr. Kegneta, bring up Steve Pinch, and he'll need to be sworn. Do you see him?
Hello?
Yeah.
Ah, yes. Mr. Pinch, could you please spell your name?
Sure, it's P I N.
And do you swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Excellent. Good, Ms. Hogan.
Ms. Walsh had a question, I believe, in regards to overflow parking. Chief, could you address that question, please?
Yeah, we don't, we don't anticipate that happening often, but like anything else, it could, you could, everybody show up at the same time. What it is, is those members would, you know, not be opposed to blocking each other in because they would all be together. So on the unlikely event that it happened, or when it happens, they would just have to, you know, move each other out of the way if somebody had to leave first. Generally, their meetings, they're there at the start, and they all leave pretty much at the same time. So that's what we anticipate. It happens at a couple of other stations, but we don't see it very often.
So they won't be in the driveway or anywhere that would limit the emergency response?
Yeah, we, I mean, you know, seeing we would be at the fire station and the ones driving the trucks. If we had a big overflow, we would park in front of those bays and move them to get the trucks out and not.
And they go out the front, yeah.
Correct.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
And Chief Pinch, just for the sake of it, I mean, these are, these are drive-through buildings, right? Meaning that.
The rescue bay is a drive-through, the rescue bay is a drive-through, the fire department bay is not.
So what's on the backside of that building, then? Like, the, the driveway seems to butt right up to the backside of the building.
Yeah, we have the ability to have storage in the back of the building, but trucks will not be rolling out of the back.
They're not. Okay, so that's, that's a potential overflow area, that, that location in the back?
That is, that's an area that could be used for parking.
And then the same in the backside of the emergency, not the drive-through on the west side, but, but the eastern backside, northeast side in the back, some of it marked there as well.
Right.
Yes, if there's excess. And still, if the keys were lost, they can still drive and.
Yeah, the main thing is to make sure that road's not blocked for the rescue. Other than that, we can, you know, can wait if we had to.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Rosen?
Yeah, Bill Rosen here. I have a couple of questions for both Mr. Casali and Mr. Pinch. And I'll start with Mr. Pinch. How many fire trucks are going to be housed in, inside the building at any one time?
It would be two fire trucks and a rescue boat.
And is there enough room for that?
So, yes, one of the trucks would be, one of the trucks would be a Class A pumper, the bigger engines, and the other one would be some type of utility vehicle that would tow a boat.
And these are going to be parked in the building or, or outside the front of the building?
They would be housed in the building with, they would exit and enter the building from the front.
Okay, I saw some diagrams, Mr. Casali, where you, you, you plotted some, it looked like wheels driving in and out of the driveway, et cetera. And it looked like they were going in the west side of the building, but that is not what I'm seeing on the diagram that was posted earlier. Is that incorrect, or is that an earlier iteration?
It, it is. It was, it was a previous iteration to discuss with planning that the spaces, the parking spaces proposed would accommodate larger vehicles such as an oversized or extended bed pickup truck. The, the ambulance, the turning radius for the ambulance to swing around in drive-through building is there, and you see that the building was designed, the length and the width, so that it can house the existing pumper truck and the existing boat and utility vehicle, but it's also designed that, you know, someday, it's, it's in our wishlist, our capital improvement plan to have a ladder truck there, and that's why it's forty-four feet off of the property line so that we can house the two apparatus in the building. But if we pull them out to wash them or whatever, we're still within our own property line.
Could you repeat that? It was on my screen there in the middle.
Yes, so the, the basis of the design for the station to be offset forty-four feet from the property line is so that we now have the ability to put both apparatus in the bays, or we can, we can store them outside to wash them or operationally other items and still be within our own property line.
Okay, Mr. Pinch, to, to return to you, is there going to be any on-street parking or off of the lot itself?
We don't anticipate any.
Yeah, it's, it's, would be a narrow road, particularly for fire vehicles to come through there and. Yeah, it's, it's, would be a narrow road, particularly for fire vehicles to come through there and. I saw in 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 the um. In the ordinance that there was accommodation for off-street parking in certain. Ways that you could do it, but I I don't see any ability in this particular case.
No.
Yeah, okay. Mr. Pinch as well. There's, in the letter of opposition, there's talk of being another site for the EMS. I don't know if you're the one to ask this question, but. Is the firehouse going, uh, the firehouse going to be built first after it's demolished before the EMS building?
Well, we would hope to have, to know if the town was gonna be on a different site by the time we started construction. But uh, you know, our plan is, obviously, we would like to build as soon as possible. We have certain windows of time we can build. Due to the fact that depending on where we store the engine, you know, being outside in the winter is difficult. So uh, we anticipate building the fire station as soon as we get all the approvals and the bids back. As far uh, EMS, we hope that we'd be, you know, determined by the town if they were gonna be with us or on the post-road site by that point.
Okay, good, thank you. Um. Somebody asked this question previously. I don't know whether Mr. Casali or Mr. Pinch wants to answer this, but. Is that driveway that goes by the west side of the building, is that intended to be a two-way street or uh, lane?
Yes, it is intended to be uh, two ways.
And could two fire trucks get by there going in opposite directions?
If they were moving um, slow enough, not at a high rate of speed, not at eighteen feet.
Yeah, okay, but they could get by each other. I I I'm thinking about for maintenance and all this type of stuff. Sometimes you wanna go elsewhere other than right there to to wash the the firehouse. That's what I see over at the Kingston Firehouse, which is the closest firehouse to me, that they, they sometimes go behind the building to do some of their maintenance and that type of stuff.
Yeah, did you address that for Mr. Rosen, please, as to whether or not we would anticipate having two fire trucks on that lane at any given time?
Sure, the Kingston Firehouse is a drive-through bay, which is nice when you wanna be on both sides of the building. Uh, we don't anticipate taking the trucks down and back very often, and if it was, it would be one. Uh, having them pass together would be very, very rare. And actually, the two trucks at that station. One would be more of a oversized pickup and the other one would be a traditional fire engine. And we have a maintenance facility on Ace upon Road where all our repairs are done. So generally, any repair work would be done also.
Oh, okay. Thank, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Uh, board, any other board members or Mr. Brown? Do you have anything that you wanted to? Ask as well?
And again, Beau, if you wanted to unmute, uh, star six would mute and unmute you if you have anything you wanna say.
Or just flash your lights, I'll look.
Yeah, I'm I'm good. I have no questions.
Okay. Um, Ms. Hogan, uh, is there anything you wanted, any other witnesses or?
Mr. Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Daniels.
I have a couple of questions for Chief Pinch.
Go for it.
Put some clarification, actually, good evening, Chief.
Hello?
Couple of uh. Uh, two-part question, I guess, um, to clarify what you had testified to just a little bit earlier. If the board were to grant this variance tonight, how soon are you prepared to go ahead? One, and or are you still evaluating other sites too?
Uh, the Union Fire District is not evaluating any other sites. We, uh, you know, were approached by the town way back and uh. Myself, as being in public safety, I'm a strong believer that we need a rescue down there. Uh, we like to share services as possible to help the taxpayers, so we were happy to work with the town to try to accommodate a rescue down on our posse. Uh, but if that doesn't work out and they go to a different site, uh, you know, we just want the best solution for the town. But our building will not be, we're not looking to relocate our building anywhere else.
So you would, uh, assuming you got approval of these variances that are requested. You would do what first? Would you raise the existing building first? Would you uh, construct the EMS building first? And when? How soon?
Chief, how about I just jump in there for a moment? Mr. Daniels, good evening. It's Attorney Hogan. Um, so as far as process is concerned and what would happen next. Assuming for the moment this board were to grant the requested relief, the next step we would take is to um. Uh, finalize a proposed agreement with the town of South Kingstown. Um, and present that to the town manager and the town council. If the, in that point in time, it would be up to the town to make a determination as to whether it was going to enter into that agreement with us. For us to go out to bid and construct this facility. Um, and if the town elected not to uh, sign that agreement. We would then go out to bid solely for the fire station, and we would go through the bid process. Select the contractor and bid in construction. We are motivated to move very quickly on this endeavor. Uh, Chief Pinch has um, uh, uh, already identified the fact that. Um, the truck can't be out in the winter months, so we have been on a delay for. Gosh, the better part of a year, and we are going to be moving as quickly as we possibly can to resolve. We certainly are trying to be good um, stewards and uh, partners with the town in its endeavor to have an EMS facility. But at the end of the day, that's the town's decision to make. And so I hope that answers your question as far as process.
So it sounds like the, if you're granted the approval, the firehouse comes first.
The, if we're granted approval, um, and the town agrees to enter into the lease agreement with us. We will go out to bid for both facilities, and I don't know uh, from a construction standpoint, which building would go in first. But at that particular point in time, we would be um, locked in together. So it's going to be up to the town council as to whether or not it wishes to proceed.
Okay, so I guess back to Chief, Chief Pinch. What what do you propose to do with the equipment during the raising of the building? Where where would you, where would you put the equipment to serve that area of town?
As you know, whenever you build a fire station, you do have to be out of service for a short amount of time. So we would look at options to see if we could store the truck, obviously, in that area as first choice. But obviously, finding a place, you know, where you don't need heat would be a lot easier than finding a place where you need heat. So that's why number one, we're looking for the warmer months to do the construction. The smaller vehicle would probably be relocated off-site, but the engine would stay in the area. But we have had some uh, people um, who gave us an indication that they would be willing to assist us with storing the engine in that area. If none of those options worked out, we would look into maybe manning one of the material, uh, Snug Harbor Fire Station. So that it would be a quick response to that area if needed in the time during construction.
Okay, thank you.
Board members, any other questions?
No.
For Mr. Pinch or Mr. Casali?
Not at this time.
Ms. Hogan?
Mr. Chair, I would like the opportunity to um, uh, sum up and or conclude once you've taken your public comment, if that's all right with the board.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
So uh, Jessica, do you wanna remind everyone how they make themselves known?
Sure, so on your computer, you're gonna hit the raise hand function. Uh, you will be called upon the order of which you raise your hand. At that point, we will unmute you and allow you to speak. Um, I don't have anyone calling in on phone, so now would be the time to raise your hand if anyone has any questions. No one has.
Okay. Um, just 'cause it's uh, Zoom and people might have a little bit of a challenge. Ms. Hogan, if you're not opposed to it, um, if someone does wanna have something to say after you finish. Uh, we'll let him go. So. Uh, was there any other questions by the board members? Um, Ms. Hogan, go for it.
Thank you. Uh, members of the board, Mr. Chairman, thank you so much for your attention this evening. I know that the um, Board of Wardens, uh, Chief Pinch and uh, our development team all appreciate your thoughtful consideration. Uh, what I'd like to do is just review for you the standards of a dimensional variance, which I know you could probably say by heart. And identify for you why we believe we've met that standard of proof. The first item that we need to establish for you is that the hardship from which the applicant seeks relief is due to the unique characteristics of the subject land. Or structure. Um, you've heard uh, testimony on the record this evening as to the narrow width of the property. The existing structure that's there. Uh, you've heard testimony that um, the uh, the the proposed structure. Is actually going to be narrower than the existing structure. We all know that a pre-existing lot of record is what it is, and we cannot change its dimensions. Um, the the very nature of the structure that's proposed to be constructed is a public safety structure. Um, and you've heard testimony as to the trucks that are going to be um, housed in that um, uh, structure. Uh, consistent with what is there for the protection of the pub- public health, safety and welfare that currently exists today. So we believe that we have met that standard. The app, uh, the hardship is not uh, the result of any prior action of the applicant. It does not result from the desire of the applicant to realize greater financial gain. It probably goes without saying that there is no financial gain for governmental entity to build a public safety complex, but for the record, I do state that. Um, and that uh, there's no prior action here of the applicant that has caused the need for this dimensional variance. It's purely a function of the pre-existing nature of the lot of record and the narrow um, nature and the sloping nature of that lot. The third item is that the uh, granting of the requested variance will not alter the general characteristics of the surrounding area. Or impair the intent or purpose of the zoning ordinance of the comprehensive plan of the town. This um, uh, property is go- uh, pardon me, governed for. Zone, pardon me, zone for governmental use, and that is what is the proposed um, use. Both for the Union Fire District structure and the potential EMS structure for the town of South Kingstown. These are both governmental entities. It is appropriately zoned and therefore consistent with the zoning ordinance. And therefore, consistent with the comprehensive plan's future land use map. That the relief granted is to be the least relief necessary. Uh, we would submit to you that we have established that as well. We've identified that the um, the the maximum number of. Uh, parking spaces um, could be accommodated, but only at an environmental impact that none of the parties. Um, in the area want to have, nor do we. Uh, the function is not, uh, the 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 need for the variance is. Um, one that is more consistent with the use of the property as opposed to just a straight measure of square footage of of a building. Um, and we believe that it is necessary to meet the programmatic requirements of the district. As well as the town, if the town decides to move forward with the EMS building in that location. Um, I'd like to again, thank you all very much for your attention this evening, and I would respectfully uh, request that the board. Grant these two-dimensional variances and permit the Union Fire District to move forward with improving public safety for the town of South Kingstown. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Hogan. Um, board members, um, well, let me just make sure one more time. Uh, Jessica, is there anyone out there at the interim?
No one has raised their hand, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Um, so uh, let's go around and board members. How are you feeling about this? Uh, does anyone wanna jump in to start?
Yeah, well, Mr. Chairman, um, Tom Daniels, I think the heavy lifting has been done here by the planning board. And um, I think the request. To um. Reduce the twenty-four-foot requirement to eighteen is reasonable. I think the uh, testimony supports that. Documentation supports that, and I think the testimony supports that the reduction in the parking spaces. Um, can reasonably, reasonably accommodate the staff and people that would be on site. So uh, I have no problem with the application.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Mr. Rosen, how are you feeling?
Um, well, I'm feeling like um, I agree with Mr. Daniels. I am a little concerned about uh, the order or the process that's going to be taking place. And to satisfy uh, the Schwabs, I would certainly like to see the EMS building. Built elsewhere or at least last, um, or take as long as possible. I guess I'm going to be in in favor of this uh, change. Uh, since we're only considering the parking in the uh, in ingress, egress situation as far as the uh. Moving towards the EMS building. Um, so I will go along with this.
Um, Mr. Charakwick?
Uh, I think um, the concerns of the abutters, it seems like have been largely addressed. So I, and given what the scope of uh, our review is here, I I agree with uh, Mr. Daniels.
Okay, Ms. Walsh? Just. But we were done with.
Yeah, I think I'm finished. No, um, I I, it's a very limited request for very specific things. And um, a lot of information has um, I've heard a lot that satisfies my concerns tonight. Thank you.
Mr. Brown, anything to add?
Uh. Am I on?
Yes, you are.
You are.
Yeah, I I don't uh, with the limited amount of equipment uh, that's gonna be involved. And uh, I don't see there's any problem with the eight, eighteen-foot driveway. Uh, i- if the board sees fit to grant it, uh, I would suggest that they grant it. Uh, with the stipulation that the planning board also had uh, on the seven A. Of the conditions of approval. And that's in the, in the event that the second building is eliminated from the project. That's.
Okay. Um. Okay, so um.
The, so if they do that, they don't have to come back to the board because they're changing conditions.
Ms. Hogan, um, how do they feel about the conditions of approval from the planning board? Are these all considered part of the things that they're gonna achieve or?
That that's correct, uh, Mr. Chairman. We are aware of those conditions and um. Prepared to deal with them because they are conditions of approval. And um, the the board had specifically indicated that if the town elected not to proceed. That we would not need to go back to them to change our development plan review. Um, they built that into the process. We'd be able to to move forward.
Okay. And uh, Ms. Goins, we don't have to uh. Do we have to, we don't have to adopt the planning board findings of fact or conditions of approval because this is their own approval, right?
You do need to, this is Amy, you do need to, the member who makes a motion to approve, and it sounds like it is gonna be a motion to approve. Should incorporate these recommended conditions of approval from the planning board, because the planning board reviewed it on an advisory basis. So they come to you, the zoning board, as recommended conditions of approval. Um, and the uh, member making the motion can briefly state findings of fact and address the standards for the variance. You can also reference and will include in the decision the planning board's own separate findings on their related standards.
Thank you. Um, okay, um. So without. I'm almost forgetting what I'm supposed to do. So. So um. Is there anyone willing to make a motion?
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman?
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Rosen. Um, any other discussion? Hearing none. Uh, Mr. Daniels?
This is a motion to approve the petition of a Union Fire District of South Kingstown. The application was read into the record by the chairman. The documentation was identified by the admin assistant. Uh, the applicant is seeking a dimensional variance relief of six feet. Uh, for uh, a driveway on the western side of the property. Is also seeking relief for six parking spaces. Uh, sixteen are required. They're gonna have, uh, they're gonna end up with. They're going to have, they're going to end up with 10. They're asking for relief of six on the entire parcel. And the following individual spoke as representatives of the applicant represented by Attorney Hogan. Joseph Casali, the professional engineer that prepared the site plans and the documentation, all 222 pages. And the chief of the fire district, Stephen Pinch. There was no one that spoke in opposition, but there was letter, one letter identified from the butter that was in objection to the proposed dimensional variance. But the board has considered that and given it, given it its full attention during the course of the hearing. The board finds that the hardship from which the applicant seeks relief is due to the unique characteristics of the subject land and not to the general characteristics of the surrounding area. And it is not due to any physical or economic disability of the applicant. Because this lot is severely restricted by width from east to west. It's very narrow. And in order to construct the EMS building and reconstruct, raise and reconstruct the fire building, it, they need, they need to reduce the standard of 24 feet for driveway to 18 feet. There's just no other way they can accommodate the building, which needs to accommodate the fire apparatus. And that's, of course, in the best interest of the safety and the health and well-being of the surrounding botanic area. The board finds that the hardship is not the result of any prior action of the applicant and certainly does not result primarily from the desire of the applicant to realize financial gain because I don't think they're going to sell the fire department or the EMS building anytime soon. The board finds that the granting of the requested variance will not alter the general character of the surrounding area or impair the intent or purpose of the zoning ordinance or the comprehensive plan upon which the ordinance is based. Because the planning board has issued a advisory opinion in that regard. And the that criteria with the comprehensive community plan and the zoning ordinance has been recommended for approval by the planning board, which has vetted that in previous testimony and a previous hearing. Secondly, the area, it is, it is own governmental governmental zone, zone governmental presently, and there exists an existing fire station. So it's certainly keeping in character with what exists presently. The board finds that the relief to be granted is the least relief necessary because the applicant has taken every opportunity to reduce the size of the building to accommodate equipment. And therefore is is forced to ask for six feet relief in terms of the in terms of the driveway and also the six parking space relief for for parking. There's just nothing else that based on a testimony and documentation, there's nothing else the applicant can do with regard to placing the building and the EMS building anywhere else. The board finds that the hardship suffered by the owner of the subject property, if this variance is not granted, amounts to more than a mere inconvenience. Again, I restate the need for public safety, the health and well-being of the neighborhood and of the botanic community. This approval is subject to the conditions as outlined in the planning board's advisory letter dated December 1. And that was as a result of a hearing on the 23rd of November of 2021. And the full criteria for which the planning board has outlined for our consideration is made part of this approval. And with that, I ask for approval of the petition.
Motion is made by Mr. Daniels. Can I get a second, Mr. Rosen?
Yes.
Okay, any other discussion? Nope, hearing none. Mr. Daniels?
Aye.
Mr. Rosen?
Aye.
Mr. Charcwick? Ms. Walsh?
Aye.
Mr. Cagnetta, aye. Motion passes.
Thank you, members of the board. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, that was about an hour.
Just a moment.
Good work, everyone. Thank you. So we are going to then jump back to the start with the continuation of the petition of Jacqueline French of 14 Eldred Court, South Kingston, Rhode Island, 02879. For a dimensional variance extension under the zoning ordinance as follows. The applicant is seeking a one-year extension of the expiration date for a dimensional variance granted on December 16, 2020 and recorded on January 5, 2021. Land evidence book 1772, pages 121 through 122. The request made pursuant to section 910A of the zoning ordinance. Owner of the property is Jacqueline M. French for premises located at 14 Eldred Court in South Kingston, Rhode Island. Assessors map 574, lot 218, and is zoned in R10. And the documents they sent in was a correspondence received on December 3, 2021 from Jacqueline French. And then also the zoning decision and cover letter granted December 16, 2020 and recorded January 5, 2021. Land evidence book 1772, page 121 dash 122. So is there, Ms. French? Um, you're here. So could you please state your name and spell it?
Jacqueline French.
And spell it for us?
Oh, F R E N C H.
And do you swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Excellent. So please go ahead. What would you like to do?
Oh, yeah, we would just like to ask for that one-year extension. Due to contractor availability, materials availability, we made a couple of creative changes, nothing that affects, you know, your area. If anything, we've gotten a little smaller on the sides of the house. But yeah, basically. That's it.
Okay.
With normal delays.
Okay, and Ms. Goings, are we, are we providing any special opportunities for due to COVID for extensions? Or there really isn't?
This is Amy. You know, under 907, I'm sorry, 910, the expiration section. This is a first extension, so there's really not even a requirement. There's a requirement for cause. It changes a further extension for cause if a second extension is needed. Has a little higher standard, but certainly the board can consider the supply chain delays and financial hardships due to COVID as certainly cause and and good cause for an extension.
Okay. Is there, and and how long would we extend it for?
The extension runs for one year. So from the original expiration date. So the first extension just adds a year to that original expiration date. If they need to request a second extension, then again, they'd have to make an application within that one-year period.
So the December 16, 2023? Or no?
So they
Yep.
They originally received the permit in 2020, and it was due to expire in 21. Is that correct?
Yeah, January, well, it was recorded on January 5.
Okay, January 5, 2021. So the expiration would have been on January 2022. They did get the application in before that expiration. So the new expiration date will be January 2023.
Got it. Okay. Does that make sense, Ms. French?
It does. I just have one question. So we have to basically pull the permit and start work by that date. Right? By the, by January 2022.
Does it have to be done by then, Ms. Goings, or just started?
No, just
Yeah.
Just a permit.
You just, yeah, this is Jamie. You just, we just need to issue the building permit before that expiration date.
Okay. All right, because we might want to do some of the, do the work incrementally instead of all at once. I mean, I don't know that that's necessarily relevant, but I just, I wanted to mention it. So, you know, we might be pulling a permit for part of it and then, you know, throughout the year. You know, doing work throughout the year.
Yeah, just this is Amy. Just please be in touch with the building official as as the year progresses.
Of course, yep.
And and Jamie, speaking from experience, I know the answer, but how long do people have to to finish a project once they pull a permit?
I mean, there's a six-month expiration, but we're, as long as we're given notice for, you know, additional time is needed, we'll grant that as needed. Absolutely.
So if it is something you're doing on your own, just make sure you're in touch with them. If you feel that it's going to be an elongated project.
Okay, yeah, we will for sure.
So anyone in the audience want to speak up on this? Concerns?
No one has raised their hand.
Okay, board members, any thoughts, concerns, motions?
I I would make a motion to grant the extension if you want.
Please, go for it.
Okay. Moved at the motion of the petitioner, Jacqueline French for where am I? For a one-year extension of the construction that was granted by this board in 2020 for 14 Eldred Court be approved as a one-year extension and should and the extension will be good until January 5, 2023.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Second.
Second, Ms. Walsh? Any other discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Rosen?
Aye.
Ms. Walsh?
Aye.
Mr. Charcwick?
Aye.
Mr. Daniels?
Aye.
Ms. Cagnetta, aye. Motion passes. Good luck.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, next we have the petition of Michelle Quirk, care of the South County Survey Company LLC. 382B, Main Street, South Kingston, Rhode Island, 02879. For a dimensional variance extension under the zoning ordinance as follows, the applicant is seeking a one-year extension of the expiration for a dimensional variance granted on December 16, 2020 and recorded on January 5, 2021. Land evidence record or land evidence book 1772. Page 123, 124. Request made pursuant to section 910A and the zoning ordinance. Owner of the property is Michelle Quirk for premises located at 159 Browning Street, South Kingston, Rhode Island, assessors map 961, lot 32, and is zoned R30. Who is here tonight for that?
I am Michelle Quirk.
Michelle Quirk. Hi, Michelle. Do you, could you please state and spell your last name?
My name is Michelle Quirk, last name Q U I R K.
And you swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, so tell us what you'd like to do.
I have similar situation. We've run into problems with the trying to get contractors. We were targeted this past fall to start phase one, and I've just been pushed back six months, and that was in October. So I'm running into same issues. Can't get supplies, can't get my contractors. We're ready to go. I want it done as soon as possible, but I I'm just held up.
Board members, questions from Ms. Quirk?
Uh, no questions, Mr. Chairman, but there is a objectors letter you might want to identify.
Oh, right. I did not read in the, thank you, sir. Okay. So there is the documents sent in, there's a correspondence received December 22 from Ms. Shelley Quirk. Zoning decision and cover letter granted December 16, 2020 and records recorded January 5, 2021, the land evidence book 1772, page 123, 124. And then there's the correspondence from Bert Hess, 59 Rosebrier Ave in South Kingston. Received on January 6, 2022. And okay. This is a okay, this is concerning the extension for a two-car garage on 59 Browning Street. I regret that I'm unable to attend the zoning board of reviews, January 19, 2022 meeting because of spreading COVID Omicron pandemic. Provide his opposition. I wanted to provide my opposition to Michelle Quirk's request dated December 22, 2021 for the following reasons. The required building permit was not filed for by the applicant or agent until December 10, 2021. At least four 2021 projects in the immediate area were also granted special use of variances. They give four addresses of 939 Green Hill Beach Road, 133 Browning Street, 69 Rosebrier and 137 Rosebrier, where all work has been started. The present dilapidated garage structures deemed dangerous by the only owner of South County Survey Company could not have been removed to make a less than ideal situation safer. Could have been removed, excuse me. I have concerns that recently planted evergreen trees planted by the neighbor on the adjacent property will be damaged by this project. And this project is in a flood zone facing climate threats as shown in the FEMA map and the New York State, New York Times dated January 2, 2022. The garage roof runoff is not directed to an owner's drainage area such as Water Garden. And a building contractor must construct the owner to maintain or repair this project without the express permission to enter or to make use of a property of both hang on, read this again. A building contractor must construct the owner to maintain and repair this project without the express permission to enter and to make use of the property of both the present or future of Butters. Sincerely, Bert Hess of Butter. Okay. So, Mr. Daniels, that was the letter you're referring to?
Yes.
So I'm not sure, based on the 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 request of the extension, how much we can address in that because we're not relitigating the initial application. And I think if you did pull the permit before the end of the period, then I'm not sure what the concern is. Ms. Goings, is there anything jumping out at you on that in that letter that that we should be concerned about of concerning the extension request?
Yeah, I I don't recall off the top of my head, but I'd be willing to bet Mr. Hess did express opposition to the original application, which is fine. His concerns at this point sound substantive, not so much related to the extension. The fact that other owners and applicants were able to complete projects that were per, that were approved in 2020 doesn't doesn't mean that this applicant didn't show cause for an extension. Under the zoning ordinance, there's no need for a public hearing on this first extension. We, of course, put it on the agenda for the Open Meetings Act. So you can consider the correspondence for what it's worth, but this extension should be considered more or less Um, this extension should be considered more or less by right. Because the cause standard is a pretty low standard to me. And as we said with the last extension request, COVID in my view certainly um. Uh, is sufficient cause to justify the granting of a first extension request.
Great, thank you. Um, and Ms. Quirk, uh, nothing changed within your plan, right? You're not doing anything different than what you've submitted?
Nothing.
Nothing.
Nothing's different.
Okay. Um. So uh, board members, any thoughts to this application? No problems?
No issue.
Okay, so.
I don't have an issue, but I just want to make a statement. I, I went down there and looked at the property. And there has been improvement. Uh, I noticed that the. What I assumed was the garage at one time, which I remember visiting there earlier. Uh, was in pretty dilapidated shape, uh, but things have been cleaned up down there. And uh, I believe that Ms. Quirk has uh done some things. In, in the proper direction, and thus I would uh be willing to extend this. For another year, because I think she's gonna succeed, so.
Thank you. Chairman?
Yes.
Have a hand raised in the audience?
Oh, great, okay.
All right, Mary Gale. You're all set, you just need to unmute.
Mary, could you uh please say and state your name, please?
Uh, Bird Hess using Mary Gale's connection.
Okay, uh, Mr. Hess, do you uh swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Go ahead, Mr. Hess.
Okay, we've already very discussed a portion of the building permits. Just for the record, there were twelve hundred and eighty-two building permits that were issued. By uh South Kingston Building Officials in uh this last year, twenty twenty-one. So there were um, considerable number of people that were able to proceed with their projects. Uh, during COVID, during the expensive lumber. And uh, were able to get contractors. And in the meantime, this dilapidated building is still standing. Uh, with that said, uh, with the building itself, existing garage. Open porch and the lean-to, that has a combined area. Of uh five hundred and twenty square.
Mr. Hess, we, we're not here to.
I, I know, but for the record.
Or, or the application.
I would just.
Original application.
I would just like to state that the footprint of the new garage is ten percent larger. It's five hundred and seventy-six, it is not the same.
Um.
So I'm not sure. I'd like the board to take that and to review that.
Well, I'm, I'm not really sure what we can do to review that. If there is uh, if they're, if they're building something different than what was on the plan. Then it's an issue you need to bring to the building inspector.
I will.
So. Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Jessica, anyone else?
No one else.
Um, Ms. Quirk, you have anything to add?
No, sir.
Um. Any other thoughts, board members, um, or someone like to make a motion?
I think from what Amy's told us, it's pretty straightforward.
Yes, I think, I think, you know, we're not looking for a lot of reasons. They don't really need to give us a lot, other than they need more time.
And there's not a lot we could do to reopen a decision.
No, I think it was already approved as, you know, uh, last year. Um, and if the design changes, then that's more of a concern of the building official.
Uh, I'll move to approve.
All right, go ahead, Case.
Yes, sir, go ahead, Mr. Charquewick.
I'll move to approve the petition of uh, Michelle Quirk uh, of uh. Fifty-nine Browning Street, South Kingston, Rhode Island, the applicant seeking uh one-year extension to uh the dimensional variance. Uh, the applicant has stated that the delay is caused by COVID, the supply chain and um with labor. Uh, as well as increased costs have uh all resulted in delays, so with that, I move to approve.
I'll second.
Second, my Mr. Rosen, um, any other discussion? Nope, uh, Mr. Charquewick?
Hi.
Mr. Rosen?
Hi.
Ms. Walsh?
Hi.
Mr. Daniels?
Hi.
Mr. Cognita, I, motion passes. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, um. The next one, um, the petition of Thomas Rock. Uh, we have a correspondence for that, that I had right in front. Now I can't find it, um.
Do you like me to read it?
Nope, thank you. I'm like in the dark here, I don't know, there's no reading for it, but um, okay, uh, this is from um, Thomas Rock. Dated Tuesday, January eighteenth, twenty twenty-two, to uh Ms. Spence. Unfortunately, I am not ready to be on the agenda for one nineteen twenty-one. I had a survey done by Wes Grant's office and everything was looking good, and half of the office has been out with COVID. And they've not been able to draw it up. Um, please confirm that I can be moved to the February meeting and please let me know the date in the February. Um, I assume it will be on Zoom. Um, we don't know that, but we're pretty sure. Um, regards, uh, Tom Rock, one sixty-two Green Hill, Green Hill Ocean Drive. Um, so uh, we have um. A request for uh them to, for us to continue it until February, which.
Sixteenth.
February sixteenth. So um, I can make a motion to uh continue the uh Thomas Rock petition. Until February sixteenth, twenty twenty, twenty, twenty-three. Um, can I get a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Charquewick?
Wait a second, wait a second.
What I do?
Twenty twenty-two.
It's three.
What did I say, twenty twenty-two, excuse me?
Right, okay.
Yeah, I just realized that, thank you, Bill.
I stutter, yes, I know, it's, it's, yeah.
No, you just don't know what year you're in.
So February sixteenth, twenty twenty-two.
I second.
Thank you. Um, any other discussion? Hearing none, uh, Mr. Cognita, I, Mr. Charquewick?
Hi.
Uh, Mr. Daniels?
Hi.
Mr. Rosen?
Hi.
Ms. Walsh?
Hi.
Okay, motion passes, so February sixteenth. So and you'll reach out to them, Jessica, the, send them an email?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Um.
Mr. Chairman, can I have about a five-minute break?
I was gonna say that we're, we're almost at a good point for that, so uh, why don't we do that? It is eight forty, um, eight forty-five. We'll come back. Great, thanks. Just make sure you mute yourselves if you can use the restroom.
Everybody back? Yes. Just so we can get going, I figure everybody's here. Yeah, okay. So, the next petition is the continuation of the petition of Alexander Gabriel of 433 Main Street, South Kingston, Rhode Island, 02879 for a dimensional variance under the zoning ordinance as follows. The applicant is seeking to construct this secondary, or second story, I'm sorry, on the existing thirty-eight foot by fifty-foot detached garage. The proposed roof height will be twenty-eight feet. The maximum height allowed for the accessory structures is twenty feet. A relief of eight feet is requested. The lot size is fourteen acres. Dimensional variance is required per the zoning ordinance, section four zero one, scheduled dimensions, dimensional regulations, and section nine zero seven are standards of relief. The owner of the property is Catherine Kathleen F. Rorick for premises located at 158A Sherman Road, South Kingston. Assessor's map eighty-two four, lot seventy-five, and is zoned R eighty. And for this petition, we have signed and dated application October twenty-six, twenty-twenty-one. Owner authorization signed and notarized October twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-one. Owner authorization signed and notarized October twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-one. Vision appraisal appraisal card, field card, four pages, map eighty-two dash four, lot seventy-five. Construction documents of five pages, boundary survey of one page, prepared by Dupree Engineering, stamped by Robert G. Babcock PLS and dated April twenty-six, twenty-twenty-one, revised May fourth, twenty-twenty-one. Two-hundred-foot radius map and a butters list, legal notice, proof of certified mailings, and notarized affidavit of mailing. Who's here tonight for this petition?
Alexander Gabriel.
Alexander, good to see you. Could you please say and spell your name? You did already spell your name for us, please.
So it's Alexander, and then last name Gabriel, G A B R I E L E.
And you swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Excellent, so go ahead and tell us what you'd like to do.
So seeking the variance for that eight-foot height relief in order to put that second story, storage slash cold stor- cold storage slash heated storage on the second floor building, the garage currently is set up to suit a second floor. So basically, what we're seeking is just that height variance and based off of what the variant circumstances are required of it. I believe that we are covering it and it's under the the least relief necessary. It's in regards to not having to build another structure on the site. So basically, what they're looking to do is spread out their storage more. They have a number of pieces of equipment and stuff of that nature to maintain the property. And basically, what they're looking to do is gain that storage without having to build another structure on the property.
So, Mr. Gabriel, so what you're saying is that the the first floor is gonna stay and they're putting a new roof? Or is it the footprint that's gonna be used? Explain something.
Yep, so the existing footprint is staying and the existing first floor of the garage is staying as well. So basically, what they're looking to do is gain that added storage space on the top there because they're because of their lack of storage currently in the space. They're trading off parking their equipment, their lawn care equipment in there with their vehicles and also just their their home belongings as well. So basically, what they're looking to do is to be able to spread out that storage space as well as gain that added area, more of a recreational area for their grandchildren as well.
What's the space currently used for?
The space is currently used as garage slash storage.
And there is a roof on it already, right now?
Yep, it's a flat roof, EPDM roof, rubber roof.
Flat roof. Is it an old structure or is it a new structure?
It's existing to the property. We don't have the exact date as far as it was built, but it was built by the previous homeowner.
Okay, okay. And is there anything like its roof structure on the property in terms of the pitch? Or is it sort of mimicking anything else that's there?
Sorry, could you repeat the first half of that?
Does it mimic, does the style mimic anything else on the property? Like the ten twelve, is it a ten twelve you're putting on there?
Yep, I can look that up. Yeah, so basically, what we're mimicking is, I mean, it's hard to mimic what's already on the property based off of the house and the other two structures that are there. But that's roughly what we're looking to install for the roof there. I just have to grab that on the plans, but.
Meaning, is it is it gonna be really out of character for it to put in something that's requiring such relief? Meaning that are you gonna put something in that that looks as if it belongs somewhere else?
No, no. Yeah, so it'll be a hip-style roof and then it'll run on that, on that ten twelve pitch.
And and right now, you said it's a flat roof?
Correct.
Which is pretty impractical as roofs go in New England.
Yeah, they have a number of drainage issues there currently, so it'll definitely help.
Flat roofs don't work. Okay, board members, any other questions for Ms. Gabriel? Gabriel or Gabrielle?
Gabriel.
Gabriel.
Mr. Gabriel, I visited the structure, but it's been a while. Beautiful area there that you have. It's a four-car garage now.
It is a five-car.
Five-car. It looked like there were four openings, but five-car. But there's equipment, maintenance equipment presently in there, I guess, in the in the present structure.
Yeah, so they have a couple of utility vehicles in there. They also have lawn care equipment and then they have one vehicle that they use there. The majority is parked on the outside of the of the garage. And then the back half of the storage is also a mix of lawn care equipment and then just personal belongings that's kind of busting at the seams right there.
Are there other garage structures around there that are higher than twenty feet?
There isn't as far as those garage or storage structures, no.
Yeah, so this would be unique to the area, right?
On their property.
Yeah. This is one fifty-eight B, is that correct? The address?
One fifty-eight A.
And one fifty-eight B goes to the right there as you go up to private drive.
That's correct.
Is there a difference between the structures? I didn't go up to one fifty-eight B. Is there a difference in the structures or do they have the same type of garage, et cetera?
Not that I'm aware of. I believe it would be somewhat separate compared to what they have on their property. But I'm not sure what's on one fifty-eight A B or one fifty-eight A versus B.
I see that the owner Kathy Rorick is here. Maybe she can answer, but I'm not asking her to, but if she's willing to, I would appreciate it.
Don't see Kathy on the attendees list. I did say she was here. I'm not sure if she had dropped.
I am here.
Okay.
Yeah, I am here.
So Kathy, just please spell your name for us, please.
Sure, Kathleen Rorick, R O R I C K.
And you swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
So help me God.
Excellent, so go ahead, Mr. Rosen.
Miss Rorick, correct?
Yes.
Okay, are you the owner of one fifty-eight A and B?
No, only A.
Only A, okay.
B is the fish family.
Okay, and I assume you live at one fifty-eight A?
Yes.
So the garage is yours?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. You say you're gonna have a recreation room on the second floor. Correct?
It's, yes, part of it. It's just a playroom where my grandkids can go up and we had one when we were living in Green Hill and the kids had a very good time. They would go up there and play games, read books, make a mess, but that was okay with me because they had a good time. So we had a ping-pong table up there.
That's gonna be about half the second floor and the other half's gonna be storage, correct?
Yeah, give and take, yeah. I do need the storage. There is no storage on the, on, in the main house at all. And as Alex said, it's bursting at the seams because of that whole household goods and Christmas decorations and you name it, jammed into the garage, so much so that we can, we're only using two of the bays right now for cars.
Okay, I assume it's not going to turn into an apartment at some time.
No, that's not the intent.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Gabriel, thank you, Ms. Rorick.
You're welcome.
Okay, board members, any other questions for either the applicant or Mr. Gabriel?
Just one, Mr. Chairman, Tom Daniels. Ms. Rorick, is it fair to say that the piece of property that you have is is the highest point in that entire area? Is that a fair statement?
I don't, I can't say that it's the highest point, but it's it's high. It's very high, as evidenced by all the wind that we've been getting lately. It's pretty noisy, but it is. There's nothing, we sit high above everybody else, yes.
So by the addition of this second floor to your garage, you're not impacting anyone's view or you haven't had any objections from neighbors or people surrounding you? Would that be a fair statement?
Absolutely. We actually, we were supposed to be heard last month and neighbors of ours who live on Hull actually came to speak in in support of our application. But they're now in Florida, so they missed their chance to support us. But no, they, you know, we're I'm not, we're isolated, we own fourteen acres and and, you know, there's nobody around, so that's basically it.
Thank you, it's a beautiful piece of property.
Oh, well, thank you very much. Come back, we'll have coffee.
I'll take you up on that.
You're more than welcome.
Okay, any other board members' questions of the applicant or? No? Well, it certainly is unique in the sense that it's it's of its own size for the area. And it seems like that the the building being eight feet taller is not gonna be any grave consequence to anyone adjacent or otherwise, so. Okay, Jessica, is there anyone out there that that has anything they maybe would want to say about this?
No one has their hand raised.
Board member, any any discussions? Board members, any discussion? If not, is there anyone willing to?
I'll make a motion.
Excellent, go ahead, Mr. Rosen.
Move the petition of Alexander Gabriel for one fifty-eight A Sherman Road, where he is requesting that a second story to the to the presently detached garage be added to the structure so that it can be divided into a recreation room and a storage room. As such, the petition was read by the chairman prior to the meeting. There were two individuals who spoke on behalf of the petition, Alexander Gabriel and Ms. Kathy Rorick, the owner of the area. And so I move the the position such that the board finds that the hardship from which the applicant seeks relief is due to the unique characteristics of the subject land and or structure and not to the general characteristics of the surrounding area because they simply want to add the second story directly to the footprint of the garage that is there. They want it to be twenty-eight feet above the land surface and the requirement is that it should, or the ordinance says that it should be twenty feet, so they want it at eight feet. They are rather high among all the other structures in the area. And so it's not gonna be a great impediment to anybody's view or and particularly since it's a more or less of a private property, well, removed from the rest of the properties in the area. I don't think there's any problem. The board finds that the hardship is not the result of any prior action of the applicant and does not result primarily from the desire of the applicant to realize greater financial gain because they're not planning to use it in any other way than it than for Rorick's grandchildren as a recreation room and for storage of equipment and personal items so that they can store, store much more of their maintenance equipment down in the first floor where there are five garages there for ample room. And they also want to have a twelve-ten pitch on the roof. Presently has a flat roof, which leads to some water problems associated with that particular structure. The board finds that the granting of the progressive variance will not alter the general character of the surrounding area or impair the intent or purpose of the zoning ordinance or the comprehensive plan upon which the ordinance base. Because it is a private property and all they're doing is adding a second story to the present one-story garage, which by the way is a lovely structure in itself and they're not going to change the look of the structure in any way so that it's not going to be a problem. The board finds the relief to be granted is the least relief necessary because there's no other way to to do the construction. And it actually will be a help to have relief from the water problems that they're having. The board finds that the hardship suffered by the owner, if the subject property or the dimensional variance is not granted, amounts to more than a mere inconvenience, simply because they want to go ahead and particularly for the grandchildren, because I hope they have a great time.
Thank you.
When I go for coffee, although I don't drink coffee, I also like to see the structure. It's a really beautiful piece of property there.
Thank you.
That's the end.
That's enough. Little bit of personal touch. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second, Mr. Charcwick, any other discussion? Hearing none, Mr. Rosen?
Hi.
Mr. Charcwick?
Hi.
Mr. Daniels?
Hi.
Ms. Walsh? And Mr. Cagnetta, I, motion passes. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for waiting.
No, thank you.
Okay, everybody have a good night.
Thank you. See you for coffee.
If you come at wine time, it's better. Okay.
Say that again?
Good night.
Good night. So at last, we have the continuation of the petition of Edward Baxter of thirty-three Atlantic Boulevard, North Providence, Rhode Island, zero-two-nine-one-one. For a dimensional variance, some of the zoning ordinance is follows. The applicant is seeking to construct a fourteen-by-eighteen-foot garage with a deck and breezeway attached to the single-family dwelling. The garage is located twenty-four feet from the property line. The required front yard setback is thirty-five feet. Relief of eleven feet is requested. The lot size is point-three acres. Dimensional variance is required per the zoning ordinance, section two zero seven, non-conforming lots of building record setback requirements and section nine zero seven standards of belief. The owner of the property is Lisbeth Peddingle for a premises located at one eighty-six Little Rest Road, South Kingston, Assessor's map twenty-three dash three, lot ten, and is zoned R twenty. We have the application signed and dated November eighth, twenty-twenty-one. Owner authorization signed and notarized November eighth. Plan of survey prepared by Atlas Survey, Land Surveying, stamped by Marcus Chanel, PLS, and dated October seventh, twenty-twenty-one, and revised November first, twenty-twenty-one. Construction documents of about nine or about twelve pages, prepared by Design Plus Designer Dennis Sarkazan, Sarkazian, and dated July fourteenth, twenty-twenty-one. A two-hundred-foot radius map and a butters list, legal notice, proof of certified mailings, and notarized affidavit of mailing. Who's here tonight for Little Rest Road?
Edward Baxter.
Mr. Baxter, how are you tonight?
How are you?
Good, could you please spell your name?
It's B A X T E R.
And do you swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Excellent. So tell us about the adorable Little Rest Road.
Well, we're looking for eleven feet of relief to build this fourteen-by-eighteen garage and breezeway. Lisbeth is an older woman, she has no family in Rhode Island, and she's looking forward to the garage to be able to get to her car during, you know, winter storms and stuff like that, make it a little easier for her.
And is the property, are you going flush with the current setback of the building? You going more forward than the building?
The garage, I believe, is three feet forward. The breezeway is doesn't, I don't actually see it. The breezeway is, I think it's six inches back from the existing house.
So why coming out those extra few feet for towards the front?
Okay, so this is the problem. The houses, the main house is twenty feet long and in the center of the house is the bathroom and in the back of the house is her bedroom. So it leaves us this little walkway in the front of the house that's about seven feet by by ten and that window in the front is basically the only window we have to put a door to the breezeway.
So your offset of of that is dictated by the design of the building? So you're somewhat restricted as to where it can go. Is this gonna be a lot different than the neighboring buildings in terms of its setback from the street?
It will not. The the, it's pretty similar to one of the houses across the street and the pitches are the same to the main house. So, I mean, characters really fit into the neighborhood pretty well.
And we haven't received any correspondence from neighbors saying that they had an issue with this. It is a tight street, but like you said, it's it seems to be in character. Board members, do you have questions from? Mr. Baxter?
Mr. Baxter, Tom Daniels, you have a pretty severe drop-off in the back, correct?
It does, it's very severe. That's one of the reasons why the platform in the back is a little bit bigger than just a landing because the way the steps are gonna be, hopefully, we're gonna be able to go straight down, but we might need another landing. Because the way the steps are going to be, hopefully, we're going to be able to go straight down, but we might need another landing.
Okay. And therefore, that's the reason you, one of the reasons you have to come forward. Thank you.
Board members, any other questions? No?
No.
Okay. Jessica, anyone out there at all?
There's one person out there, but no one's raised their hand.
Okay. You have anything to add, Mr. Baxter? I keep wanting to call you little roadie because that's what.
I think that's it.
That's it, okay. Board members, any any thoughts on this, concerns? Otherwise?
No concern.
Someone like to make a motion to for this?
I'll do it and we'll wrap it up.
Nice. Well, you think so, we've got something to talk about after this.
Well, that's okay. Walk his feet. This is a petition of Edward Baxter and I move approval of the petition. He's representing the property owner, Elizabeth Peddingle, for premises of 186 Little Rest Road in South Kingston for a variance under the zoning ordinance, section 207, non-conforming lot of record in section 907 standards of relief. The entire application and the documentation submitted by the applicant has been read and placed into the record. The petitioner, Edward Baxter, spoke at the hearing and told us about the need for garage and breezeway to accommodate the elderly property owner, make it a little bit easier for her to get to her vehicle, especially in this colder environment. The board finds that the hardship from which the applicant seeks relief is not is due is due to the unique characteristics of the subject land and structure. Because the elevation change between the rear of the house and the rear yard is very severe. Therefore necessitating bringing the garage forward and thus seeking the relief. There's just no way you can go back any further. He also, Mr. Baxter also testified that the only reasonable opening to the home is through the window that is within the front portion of the existing structure. The rear portion contains a bedroom and a bathroom and certainly is not a convenient entryway for breezeway that would then enter into the garage. The board finds that the hardship is not the result of any prior action of the applicant and does not result primarily from the desire of the applicant to realize greater financial gain. Because once again, the elderly homeowner intends to stay in stay in the premises and simply needs this for convenience and for the ability to get to to her car. And certainly, the applicant has done nothing prior that would prevent us from granting this application. Will certainly not alter the general character of the surrounding area or impair the intent and purpose of the zoning ordinance or the comprehensive community plan. Mr. Baxter did testify that there is a similar similar structure across the street from the subject property, which consists of a breezeway and a garage, and it's certainly in keeping with the character of this small street and small lots. The board finds that the relief to be granted is the least relief necessary, once again, because there's no other reasonable alternative to place a garage in a breezeway without incurring the need for the eight feet of relief at the at the front of the property. 11 feet, I'm sorry, relief 11 feet from the front property line is requested. And there's really no other alternative on this very, very tight, small lot. The hardship suffered by the owner of the subject property, if we don't grant this, amounts to more than mere inconvenience. Once again, because we have an elderly homeowner who simply desires to be able to easily and comfortably get to her vehicle and store her vehicle in the the one-car garage that that is proposed. There are no subjects, no conditions that should be attached, I should say, to this application, and therefore I recommend passage and approval.
Motion was made by Mr. Daniels, can I get a second?
I'll second.
Second, Mr. Charkowicz, any other discussion? Hearing none, Mr. Daniels?
Hi.
Mr. Charkowicz?
Hi.
Ms. Walsh?
Hi.
Mr. Rosen?
Hi.
Mr. Cagnetta, I, motion passes. Good luck, Mr. Baxter.
Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Thank you, you too. Okay. Great job, everybody. This was a lot faster than even I expected. So, but there were a few other things that I know were of interest to talk about. One is the Garrett Holmes decision recorded on December, January 5. So the Garrett Holmes, as we may recall, is that is the Dollar General, right? Is that what it was?
Yeah.
Yeah. So so, yeah, who wanted to talk about, was that you, Amy or Jamie?
I just wanted to make sure the board was aware of the council's settlement of this zoning appeal. And I'm happy to answer any questions that aren't answered by the decision itself. Although mindful that, you know, we didn't notice this for an executive session. But any any kind of basic questions, I'm happy to answer. Or if no questions, then we can just take note of it and move on.
So how how does this happen? Like, how do how do they?
Okay. So once the zoning board issues a decision and it is appealed to the Superior Court, it's then up to the town council to direct the solicitor, to direct through the solicitor, the course of the litigation. So, you know, in some cases, the solicitor may recommend settlement based on certain factors. In some cases, we we would recommend proceeding with the litigation to a decision. And as you may know, there are some appeals for which an applicant may claim attorney fees from the town, and that's always a consideration for our office in evaluating the merits of the appeal and deciding what course to recommend to the council. So the council did discuss this matter in executive session and approved a settlement, which is essentially the issuance of the special use permit that was denied by the board by virtue of the 302 approval.
So, Amy, if I may, the council added a a couple of additional things to the original site plan, the original application, one being a pedestrian walkway within a couple hundred yards of the intersection. And that that's to be a signal crossing, is that correct?
Yes, and some of those conditions may ultimately be under Riedot's purview.
Yeah, right. That's what I would figure. Let me also ask you, what was the vote at the council?
I believe it was a unanimous vote, and I believe that was disclosed at the last meeting. And I wasn't in those executive session discussions. That was Mike, the solicitor, but I believe it was a unanimous vote.
Okay. So this didn't involve, they didn't get any more land, they just basically said that a crosswalk. Right, I thought I read, yeah, okay.
They they acquired more land between application one and application two.
Right. Amy, I just have a nerdy procedural question.
Those are my favorite kind of questions.
Oh, good. Apologies to everybody else, but if if they took the appeal to Superior Court and prevailed, the Superior Court would essentially overturn our decision, right?
The Superior Court has the authority to overturn a zoning board decision, correct?
And is that an abusive discretion standard?
So it's evaluated under the the relevance of the zoning enabling act, which allows the court to overturn a decision for any number of reasons, including lack of substantial evidence, violation of due process. So, yeah, abuse of discretion, it's yeah, let me, because we have a little more time, I'll just point you to and I'll read from that provision of the Enabling Act. Bear with me.
Sorry, everyone. No, no, this is this is helpful to me.
No problem.
It's 452469 of the Enabling Act. The court may affirm the decision, may remand the case, or may reverse or modify the decision if substantial rights of the appellant have been prejudiced because of decisions that are in violation of law, whether it be constitutional, statutory or ordinance provisions in excess of the zoning board's authority, made upon unlawful procedure affected by other error of law, clearly erroneous or arbitrary or capricious characterized by abusive discretion. So it's essentially an APA standard of review.
And then, so the zoning board also has the authority to overturn our decisions?
The Superior Court has the authority to
I'm sorry, the town council though as well. Yeah, because now they entered into the settlement and issued, you know, that that piece, I don't, that I don't understand.
Yeah, the council does have that authority because ultimately they they act for the town. And the town is potentially on the hook. So, yes, and I'll I'll talk more with you offline about that, and I can send you some case citations. But yes, when a case, when a zoning appeal goes to Superior Court, the ball is in the council's court as to, you know, as far as how to direct the litigation. The council may direct the solicitor, proceed with the litigation, let's see what a judge thinks. And in some cases, in many cases, we're confident the decision will be upheld on appeal. Where we may be, you know, not quite as confident about a decision being upheld on appeal, where we may be concerned that you know, attorney's fees could potentially be awarded to a prevailing appellant. It's those kind of situations where we may recommend settlement to the council. That's speaking general terms.
So that's essentially best interest of the town.
Correct.
Thank you.
So, Amy, in this case, the decision made by the zoning board was reviewed by the town council. It never got to the Superior Court, but it was en route.
Correct, well, it was, it was, the appeal was perfected, but the case hadn't been briefed yet. So the judge, so it wasn't quite in the judge's lap yet.
Okay, and that gave the council an opportunity. Or they always have that opportunity.
They they always have that opportunity, correct?
So can we say that counsel thought that our decision was a little weak?
Um, I don't want to speak for the council and and those minutes are still sealed. And again, I wasn't present for those discussions and we're in open session here. But, you know, in general terms, I explained when when our office may recommend settlement. So you can kind of draw your own conclusions from that.
Yep, especially since it was unanimous, they apparently felt strongly. Okay. Is there, is there anything, is there any lesson for us in this, do you think, in terms of our just how, which we, is there anything we should be mindful of as as we're making decisions? Or, or, yeah.
You know, the 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 big refrain I always repeat is when you have expert testimony that is uncontroverted. For example, a wetlands biologist, a traffic engineer, a real estate appraiser, in any number of fields in which expert testimony is is useful to you as the fact finder, the decision maker. If that expert evidence is uncontroverted, meaning if it's not rebutted by another expert, it is considered legal error to reject the expert's conclusions. Now, I would, I wouldn't call that rule absolutely ironclad. Then there may be good and valid reasons to reject expert testimony, even where it's uncontroverted. But barring something, but barring those good reasons explained on the record, a board is always on thin ice where it where it votes contrary to expert testimony that's not controverted. We would have been in a very different situation had the objectors in that case hired their own, you know, experts regarding traffic or you know, pedestrian safety. So that is, I think, just something I'll continue to repeat.
And actually, we had a case after that where you did, I don't remember the details, Amy, but you did correct me. Because I had, I had a question. I don't know if it was during the meeting or afterwards, but you did say that's expert testimony. That's, you know, so that is a good lesson.
So what is that expert's responsibility for factual content? Or that's not for us to decide? Or really, I mean, like, what if we feel that they're full of it? You know, like they're giving us a load of garbage?
You have the right to inquire about an about the basis for an expert's opinion. So if it's someone who has never visited the property, you're you're entitled to consider that as you weigh the value of the expert evidence. If it's someone who is, you know, a certified engineer, but they just received received their certification six months ago, that makes them an expert technically, but maybe not quite as much of an expert as someone with 30 years of experience. Or, you know, if there are kind of obvious mistakes in the expert's report, you know, there there are certainly valid reasons to doubt an expert. It's it's not the word of God that can't be questioned under any circumstances. But where you don't have those circumstances, where an expert testifies, you know, pursuant to generally accepted standards and practices within his or her field. The general rule is that the board is bound to those, bound to accept those conclusions and expert opinions.
And that's why they always say they have 30 years' experience and such and such, even tonight.
You guys have more questions about that case in particular?
Nope.
Okay, so do you want to jump to the wetlands regulations?
I'll be very brief on this one. I think I I vaguely recall November or December mentioning something to the board about the new state wetlands regulations promulgated by the DEM and CRMC, which will eventually take away this board's authority where wetland buffers are concerned. So the request for a special use permit to locate an ISDS, a septic system near a wetland. Those regulations have been delayed. And as you know, they're long delayed, their year is overdue, they're going to be delayed even further. The state regs that were promulgated by DEM were set to go into effect. were set to go into effect in January this month. They will now be going into effect in July. And I believe the CRMC regs are still in development. They, they were never, the DEM regs had been fully adopted. They'd been promulgated, but just not set to take legal effect until this month. Those two agencies, I think, are still trying to get on the same page and get their act together. So we have at least a few more months to hear those applications. So I'll just keep you updated as the year goes on.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Sure.
Is, is there a difference between the DEM and the CRMC?
Well, I, I'll have to see, I'll have to review the CRMC regs when they come out. I think it'll be a similar process. The CRMC has jurisdiction over wet, coastal wetlands. DEM has jurisdiction over inland wetlands. Go ahead, Bo. You know more about this than I do.
No, no, that, yeah, they, they're two separate, two separate things.
Yep.
So, yeah, which I, I always thought they should have got together when they did that originally. But they didn't. I think DEM just wanted to get rid of wetlands period and they get rid of everything on the waterfront and along the bay.
Yep, so instead of now applying, instead of now having to apply to local zoning boards for setback relief or special use permits, DEM and/or CRMC will now consider those requests. The town, there is a process for the town to weigh in on the buffers that those agencies set. It's, my understanding is it's less specific to each application and more kind of globally as the buffers and maps are adopted by the agencies. When those regulations are formally adopted and set to take effect later this year, we'll circulate a memo to the zoning board and the planning board on the topic.
Thank you.
I think it's good news for us. Go ahead.
Basically, the zoning ordinance would have to be deleted.
Yeah, whether or not we have to whether or not we have to formally amend those provisions and delete them from the ordinance, they'll be considered unenforceable once the state regs go into effect.
Right, right. Just get rid of them.
Yep.
Wait up. All right. Thank you, Amy. Okay, so the only other two things we have is the approval of November seventeen, twenty twenty-one and December fifteen, twenty twenty-one minutes. If anybody wants to make a motion to approve both the November seventeen and December fifteenth?
I'll move approval of November seventeenth and December fifteenth.
All in favor? Aye. Okay, and then attendance for one week from now. So.
I'll be here.
Oh, yes.
I will be here.
I will be here and I'd like to apologize to everybody for my absence. I tried to grab you at the beginning. But I was unmute, so I just want to apologize to everybody for that.
Well, I didn't know, so. But no, I, I'm sure something came up. It's not a.
Let me ask a question with respect to that. We have four people there. It takes four people for approval. Is there a state reg that says we have to meet with five?
I've, I've got a student on the call tonight. That's the other attendee. And she's gonna think I, I fed you this question as a learning opportunity, which I didn't. But yes, as Bo said, it's in the.
I'll accept it as a feeding.
Yeah, you need five members to hear any applications. So that's why we couldn't move forward in December. Okay. At some point, that may be changed. We'll have to see what the Land Use Commission thinks. They're evaluating the zoning and subdivision enabling act. So we'll have to see what, if any, changes come down the line. And with regard to Zoom in February, the answer is stay tuned. The current executive order permitting Zoom meetings expires in early February. So we'll just have to wait and see whether that will be renewed. I'm sure we'll get, I'm sure we'll get plenty of advance notice, just like last time.
In question to that, we're gonna need to place the ad for the February meeting prior to the governor's, you know, decision order, you know, being renewed or not. So should we advertise that it's gonna be held Zoom?
Yes, and maybe run it by me because I may or may not add a sentence about, no, you know, executive order twenty-two oh one expires on, I can't remember if it's February fourth, but, you know, please, please check the Secretary of State's website for any potential changes.
Okay.
Okay, was that, was that it? We got it all?
So the next meeting is January twenty-sixth, one week from today. Okay. And it'll be Zoom.
Yes.
It'll be seven o'clock. It'll be over before ten or at ten.
Yes, yes, we hope. All right, nine thirty-eight. Motion to a Zoom.
Motion to Zoom.
Motion to Zoom. To adjourn. All right, excellent. All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Thank you all.
Good night.
Good night, everyone.
Everybody.
Good night.
Jessica?
Yes.
I'd noticed.